Whatever it is, right. But, you know, it's better, in my opinion, to be done like this where you got, you got a pool to get the resources to get this thing done. You might not be on an individual basis.
Right.
It may never, it can't get done that way. I think it shouldn't be, I recommend it be done.
Basically, like the mayor said, most of this is in the county. The towns are just going to be involved in the planning of going through, right?
Right, right. So it's going to be all the planning. I mean, there are, yes, most of the fatalities, I think here with seventeen between two twenty, twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-one, that's our most current data that we can get. That, you know, seventeen fatalities within those areas. Most were outside in the county with, extending beyond the municipal boundary. But, I mean, I know that Delphi is seeing different challenges as opposed to, or greater level of challenges as opposed to what Florida, Berlin, or Canada are facing.
County, we pay, and the city of Delphi pays. So the people who live in the city of Delphi are being paid twice. It always works out. I'm just going to make a motion that county pays for it. We appreciate the city of Delphi stepping up from offering, but there's no use of double taxing somebody or paying twice for just a certain area if the other ones can't do it.
You're right. Now, are you going to put it in, in your motion that it's paid by?
Edit.
Edit on it? Yes.
I would have to advertise that.
Right.
For?
This one.
Yes. And the fifteenth, I'm just thinking, council has a meeting. If I can get it in by noon, or can I, can go a little bit later than then?
Today?
Yes. If I cross my fingers.
Cross your fingers and type fast.
If I can get that in by noon today, they can hear it on the fifteenth.
Okay, so we really can't go sign this until we get council money?
And we would know that whatever time.
So the motion I put's pending, council is funding.
Out of?
Edit. Or will the council define it in this?
No. You need to come on our, I mean, you left for something like this just a while ago, so.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion in a second that we participate in this program, pending council funding. You ready? Everybody happy with that? All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need to sign today?
No.
Now we got home?
So just put that on stack.
Put that in your stack? This stack is very big today.
So how do we find this part? Biz?
Am I going to sign those? Okay, what are we down to here? We're down to, to copy attorney Ted Johnson, NDOT transfer agreement.
First thing, that's just informational. I mean, received, and I had a phone conversation with Sarah Ford with NDOT. All the state agencies have signed off on it. So we should be getting the document back sometime with all those signature lines on it filled. So the transfer of Old State Road seventy, twenty-five to the county is effective July one. And so that's, that's first item. The second item, one down there is the interlocal agreement between county commissioners and the city of Delphi. You should have copied that document. And I, I mailed that to you last week with just some blank sentence. The only blank sentence.
I wrote the phrase.
Well, I, I copied.
Inter, interlocal agreement.
Interlocal agreement. So the gist in that is that the county will, they don't transfer land. They transfer the right of way. There's not, there's not a deed that goes to the county to transfer land. They're merely transferring control of the road, regulation and maintenance over to the county. The interlocal agreement is one where you're contracting under an interlocal agreement with the city to maintain the road, including the other improvements that, that the NDOT is going to build into the bridge for, for the trail, to accommodate the trail. And this is a, essentially, it's a one-year automatically renewable interlocal agreement with the initial term going through December of twenty twenty-four. So first one is going to be a little more than a year. But then either party can terminate the agreement by giving notice to the other party by October thirty-one before the end of the term. Otherwise, it renews automatically. The city will get a proportionate share of the eighty thousand dollars, which represents the estimated maintenance cost for Old State Road seventy, twenty-five, I think it said seventy-five, for, for all sections of Old State Road twenty-five, including the bridge, for ten years. That's what that eighty thousand dollar debate is based on. So that came out to, I think, is thirty-eight percent of the eight thousand dollars, thirty thousand and some dollars for, of that win that is received from NDOT. And then the second part of the funding, motor vehicle highway funds are based on mileage. And when this road is added to the county's inventory, the county will receive monies from NDOT out of the gas tax for the maintenance of this road. So the agreement provides that the county will pay to the city annually in December, the amount of motor vehicle highway taxes based upon the percentage that of this road is to the total mileage of the county. And that, that factors in, in the agreement, so.
Will they submit a claim to us?
They'll submit a claim in December. What I could not get an answer for was, I haven't talked to Scott yet, but we need to make sure that, if it doesn't automatically give in our inventory because they transferred, we need to report it. So if it does give in the inventory, we get a receiving plus because roads are paid monthly. And I think they fluctuate, they, motor vehicle highway funds. Yeah, so they fluctuate monthly. That's why I put it at the December payment because we'll take the actual data that the county has the money, the county received that year. And the city will file a claim and get paid, you know, a proportionate share of the motor vehicle highway funds for that road for a year. That's, that's just.
There's something else in there that they want to annex it? We should be allowed to annex it?
Yeah, they have a right to annex any time, anywhere. But this clarifies that this agreement doesn't impair their right to annex contiguous territory. And they may annex all or a part of territory that includes the road. That may, that's their interest in whatever they wish to do. The county will cooperate, you know. It wouldn't be a situation where probably it's the residents, you know, that will want to know the details. And I would think by already maintaining that section of road in a, in a plan that you have to do for annexation, it could be a factor in their favor if they're already paying for the maintenance, or they're already doing the maintenance. They're getting paid by the county, but they're doing the maintenance already. So that's, that's in there also.
And so it's a, a one-year contract renewed?
Yeah, automatically. It'll automatically renew. So you don't have to revisit it every year. It'll automatically renew unless one party wants to get out of it.
So?
If, if we terminate it, then we take over the maintenance of the road.
Well, that's my question. So we get a new administration and they don't want this?
Yep.
Then we're liable for the?
Correct, in the same way here. If another county administration gets in and they, so.
One of us has to maintain that road.
Somebody has to maintain. The county is responsible because the county will still, quote, own the road and control. The county would still regulate traffic, you know, as far as sign, speed limits and things like that. And, but, but the city would be, there's still planning, maintaining the road. Of course, it's going to be, you know, redone and the bridge is going to be redone and all that. So it won't be an old bridge, old road that they're going to maintain. It's going to be, eventually, it's going to be a new one. Won't be done this year.
So like, it's going to be five years when that bridge is ready to be replaced again? And Delphi says, hey, we're done. Get your bridge.
Well, counties are always responsible for the bridge.
For the bridges.
And, and none of the bridge money goes to, to the city. All the bridge money goes to the county.
You can't, I don't think, enter any things that are going to go forever anyway.
Right.
There's only going to be.
There could be some words come up.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to entertain or to sign the interlocal agreement between the city of Delphi and county for the highway.
We've got a motion in a second to endorse this agreement, right? All in favor of that, please say aye.
Gentlemen, for your information, that will be on the council's, the city council's agenda for this evening's meeting.
I mean, you know, I was last time for starting. And you just learn stuff. You just learn.
And we appreciate getting your work in this area. Thank you.
Next item, TK Elevator Contract, if you have in front of you. This is another favorite elevator. And it's ready to sign. I looked at, Keith, and I got on the phone with a representative of TK Elevator. They wanted to have the payment clause to fifty percent upfront, you know, and without any kind of invoices or anything to back stuff that they got product orders or whatever. So they agreed to the change in the payment clause and they put that in this version of it. So they have to show proof of, like, purchase orders that they've ordered these materials. A lot of their work is, you know, the engineering part of it. There is also materials involved. So Keith and I worked on this and it's ready to sign.
Ready to go.
Ready to go.
Does that, does that complete it yet? What, the elevator? Yeah. No, the final phase, which Ted is talking about now, is the control part. So it's everything else from the control switches that's located in the basement to the panels inside it, the actual cab itself, new button switches, anything wired is being upgraded, all that. And it's going to have a code they have to go down in the basement to make it security? We're still just talking about the different options that we have.
They, they, there's a typo in it, Keith. On the first page, in the proposal cover. It says December thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Okay.
So.
All have them?
That's, that's a pair in our favor. They'll, they'll want to, what is the date? It'll be twenty twenty-three?
Yeah. I mean, if this is the revised proposal, though, yeah, it'd be most current date.
Yeah, twenty twenty-three. Needs to be twenty twenty-three, I think.
This is the first time I've been presented. Is there a little behind? You know what, I think it is.
Yeah, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the modernization proposal with the correction of December thirty-one to twenty twenty-three on cover page.
We've got a motion in a second to accept this, except for changing the release date to twenty twenty-three. All, all in favor, please say aye. We pass it.
There's only one person. Bill's a lot of people. Probably at least three, third thing else.
Do you want me? I haven't ever adjusted, so I'm going to do that.
Anything you want, ahead of the question.
Well, I'm signing. The next thing is the jail easement. We have been working with Mary Broson, the attorney for the IZ Trust, and on the wording of the text part of the non-exclusive perpetual easement for the jail, the jail that killed the easement. And we've got a, we've got the changes approved by both parties. And involved in that language review were Dustin Fife and Lauren also looked at this. And we've got, got an understanding on this. The changes really relate to the owners intent that this remain a farm, it'd be farmable. Not able to lower the manholes, but everything else that can't be done to make it farmable is, aren't, aren't going to be done. This topsoil will be moved, placed aside, work in, in, so it's put back. There are provisions in there that if, if, the utilities are going to be marked so it can be farmed in the spring, like the spring, even though utility work probably won't be done until next spring. You know, be, be on there, there may be somebody on there marking as, you know, get next month, I think in July or February, but we, they said that they might be physically even be on in terms of people or surveyor or whatever. So, so we've got this hammered out and, and it's, it's just marked up right now because this, the last three edits were done by Barnes and Thorberg. I turned it over to them to look at, see if they saw anything. And so the, the things that are red were what Marion's clients on it. And then the things that blue were what Barnes and Thorberg. So there'll be a clean, I don't, I'm not wanting you to prove this. I just, this is just information for you. This is, this is the easement that's been, the terms that have been worked out.
Has this been sent to BW, did you send?
Oh, yeah. They, they, they have been involved in, had a conversation on the phone, a conference with Durham on the phone and Dustin and myself. I don't know if there's anybody in the county that I think. So that's the easement itself. And the commissioners have already approved the total compensation for the payment for the easement. And that amount is twenty-nine thousand oh ninety-four. And it is payable from the bonds. So it won't be, have to be, it won't have to be an appropriation or council approval or anything. So I prepared a resolution, which should have in front of you, Resolution Number twenty-two and three, day zero four. You've had that, you see a resolution? Should be in the.
Oh, that's exactly the word. Well, that's just another. I'm taking. Ah, I see.
Do you need to?
That's something you said this morning?
Uh, no. No. I just. Okay. Well, here's the resolution. Let me see. Let me get it. Yeah. Well, I, uh, did they, did they have that too or no? We don't have to get.
No, I didn't, I thought.
Okay. Yeah, I, and I brought the one.
Is that what the word?
Okay. Uh, no, I, yeah, I guess we can use that. Yeah, I can. Now, the resolution, you probably may talk to that. There are two, there are, there are two IZ trusts and they, there are two IZ trusts and they, Joe, and everybody who have had an interest in it. So that's one of the two invoices for it. I, we need, we need invoices to be able to back the retrovision that goes to the bond
Scott, have you got this done already in front of that? Because I had an officer suggest that they would be putting concrete barriers, just enough for car traffic. We don't have concrete barriers, do we?
No, I went up in places for the SLSA, open lane, I think it is.
Yeah.
He's got some of those, like, I'm where he puts his mulch and stuff.
Right.
That we could buy for a hundred bucks a piece or, he said he's got some.
I kind of agree with what this officer was saying, that, you know, it is an inconvenience that we put concrete barriers there to make it up where cars are going around, not trucks. I don't know what these are.
I'm thinking about that. That probably works.
I mean, it's going to help the community. I mean, like you said, three, four miles difference, and it makes a big difference to somebody's commute.
I have to go through over three fishings, so that's, that's for me, three miles. Six miles.
I'm so sick of it, I can't stand it.
It's beginning to floor.
So is that something you can look at? Possibly.
The only issue might be on that curve on the northeast side, northwest side of the rational highway comes down, you start swimming, trying to get people to escort them. You're not, the car on the opposite side is not going to be able to see somebody coming. You might have to.
Okay, okay.
I need to ask. You're probably in the car out of your driveway.
I got the requisitions, but I don't have any.
Well, if we put it at the top of the hill, on that one side, coming down.
Well, you could give top of the hill on the, on the south side probably because I can't see any, any truck kind of coming down to the hill. But on the north side, you got overhauled, so it'd have to be down.
I'm just trying to help the SLSA. Phone calls and complaints.
Where we're at here.
So there, there are two invoices for the trust. Divided for twenty-nine, forty-four.
And that's part of this.
There's a lot of times I don't have a cash. Just give them. I appreciate.
They can draw on this.
I'm trying to say I really have a problem. That's the danger of taking a little bracket inside and, you don't get them all.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-two, three, oh, four, and include the correction of the date of twenty twenty-three.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I just need, I just need two of them.
Well, you're going to get two.
Okay.
Just in case we lose one. That's never happened.
So the last document is the form called this first-in-the-funds-for-project fund. It approves the invoices and, and so it can go to the, to the bank in Oklahoma.
Always, always signed along.
It put the number three, please.
I should have told you that.
I'll make a motion. Sign the project to approve, approve the first-in-the-funds. Recommit. And you said it was number three.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yep, thank you.
So what I understand, what's with the turnaround time on that, the bank? How quickly are they?
Actually, I had no clue. I just sent it to them, they did.
Do they send you some kind of information?
They'll send me a report if I wanted to ask or.
Did you, did you send the number two in? So you just put it in the mail?
Yeah, I can see, that's the file that you mentioned. They were supposed to, they were going to.
Number two?
Yeah, they were going to put money here, which we wanted to do, but that's not till after, so they're, they're being pressed.
They're doing, the bank does, yeah. So you sent it to the bank?
I sent it to Mark Hudson.
Mark Hudson at, at the bank in Oklahoma, right, isn't it? Yes. And then they cut, cut a check. In this case, the checks are going to come to the auditor's office because since the agreement, since the easement has not been signed, can't have been signed yet by Marion's clients, and that has to go to Kansas, right? So we've got Kansas and Oklahoma and Indiana involved in this. So when, when we have the exit, the completed easement back, and I hope to get that from Martin Thorberg yet today, I, I mean, I would, they're pretty quick on turning that thing around. So I will send it to Marion so she can send both the easement and their. So I will send it to Marion so she can send both the easement and there were some trust certificates.
Yes.
That were supposed to sign. Because the original, original trustee, one of the trusts passed away and there's successor trustees. So since it's an out of state, it's an in, it's a trust, the real estate's in the hand of the multiple states involved. Those certificates you, you send them back, they need to be signed by the owner. And then those documents will, when I have a chance to look at them, I'll make sure that they're, they're okay in the easement and properly executed. Then the auditor will release the checks because I assume the checks will actually, they come before we get all this signing done. That's why I had it go to you instead of going directly to your clients was so that Beth could hold the checks for until such time as documents have been signed and are in hand. That's it.
This is the first one I have plans to place with a claim form.
Pardon?
I don't need a claim form on this, right?
Uh, no, not for.
So I just want to send this with this.
Yeah. You probably sent, like, who was it? B W's invoice, did you send their invoice with it? Yeah. Those invoices go with. They're both requisition, there's only one requisition because both invoices are on one requisition. Is there anything else that I missed, Marion?
Yeah, the only question I have is will you do the recording or do I need to do the recording?
Uh, actually.
I think that's.
We'll do the recording, yeah. We'll do the recording. I'm, I'm trying to think. Actually, Barnes and Farmer did the recording at the other issuance, you know, the deed to the, you signed the deed to the project site when you had all those. I don't know, I'll ask them if they want to do that or not.
So how about if I just, when I've got the originals in hand, I'll just reach out to you when you can tell them.
Yeah, if, if you can just scan it.
Sure.
At what sign. So you, you won't have to, you won't have to send it to me or anything like that. Just scan it, I'll look at it. And I'll let Beth know. She's got the checks already and she'll call you.
Okay.
You bring in, you give the doc, well, you know, you give the easement and the certificates to Beth and she'll hand you two checks.
Okay. I can do that.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I've got.
What about damage to county road seventy-five?
Okay, just to bring you up to date. The, there was a farmer that had equipment at some time and I'm, we're not sure exactly what kind of equipment it was. Or how it, we don't know. It put curly, really deep gouges in the road. And that happened in May, in May sometime. And one of the, the farmer called in and reported to the highway department and they went out, yes. They, they immediately began getting calls from, from planes that the road was dangerous. So they called in their on-call guy and he went out and put, put signs out there. Scott said it was thrown, looks like a rider. And it, you know, it, it went in like, you know, like that beam or something like that. And they went on for like a quarter of a mile. And so. Nobody can understand how they wouldn't notice that they were doing it, but, and the fact is that they turned onto the road that goes to somebody, their home. And there's no gouges on that road. So whatever they were pulling, they lifted up for their road, but they damaged seventy-five. So the highway department sent them a bill and it's been revised. They should just turn it over to their insurance company, you know, it should be paid.
You know, the only place I know of county road seventy, is it seventy-five west or seventy?
It's north of Campbell County, right past.
North of Campbell, okay.
We just sealed it like two years ago. From five hundred north to five fifty north.
Yeah. So that, I just wanted to bring it, let you know about it. Scott got ahold of me and we got a letter out, you know, so hopefully they'll turn it over.
And there should be more work done too on top of this invoice, right?
We went out and chipped the seal over it, just a half mile. And then we had simple paving to look at it, per request from Ted. And then they, they said one, two options. We can either seal it again or grind it up and pave it, which would cost about fifty thousand dollars. So originally we was going to double, seal it again, but we wouldn't have charged it for the second coat. But, but since he refused to pave first one, so I guess we're.
Oh, so they're being sticklers about it, farmer.
Yeah, they, he's, he told us you want to see a diamond for me.
Well, then we can tell him he can just pay for the paving because maybe that's what we just need to do because that road was in good shape.
So.
Tell him either he pays these two invoices or it's going to be paid. He's going to pay for that.
Yep.
That'd be my recommendation.
Now, the letter, the letter pointed out, you know, that's why I asked Scott to get ahold of somebody to get some other buddy else to look at independent at the county saying that, yeah, this needs to be done. And that's what they did. They came out right away the next day, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
They came, they came out the next day and said, yeah, you either got to seal it again or mill it. One and a half inches of hot mix and compressed, you know, a half of hot mix and that would be about fifty-one thousand dollars. We let the owner know, you know, that there was a, no option out there, yeah.
It's highly travel route since it's connected to the road.
So no action department?
Oh, like I was people calling, why didn't we just chip himself part of this road? I had no idea it was damaged at the time.
I think you know, like on motorcycle, at least a bit.
I ride up and down that all the time.
Yeah. At least a little bit of through it on a motorcycle. I went and looked at it and been repaired for, for. I didn't know about it till. He didn't even call the highway. Told me some things in the back there.
Did you get any pictures of it?
I got, I got, I did get a picture.
Swirling seal.
Okay. I think that's our option, right? Either he pays for these two coatings or he's going to pay for that, haven't redone.
Is that pavement under all the chip and seal? Or is that pavement something that's under all the chip and seal?
Yeah, it was just paved probably.
Yeah, it was, we just sealed it out. We just sealed it a couple of years ago.
Yeah. But it was pavement.
Yeah, yes, yes.
This is the street that I can't, been going right up to Hartland.
It's one of the ones that we wanted to expand and.
We're through everything on here. Is there any other county business?
I do have some.
Yep, did you?
Oh, yeah. Executive order, lower the speed limit on six hundred south. Slowing down.
Okay, so Ted, what are we doing here?
Okay, so Scott's contacted me and the state started the project on Saturday, right?
It's the first day of, yeah.
Yeah, so you tell them, Scott. You talk, you talk to Ian Dodd about it.
Oh, six hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. You got, you got calls that. Big trucks on it and running down the river, you know, fast. And that was narrow anyway. Tight and narrow. Two zero for big trucks. So we had decided to, you know, look at and see if we could drop that speed limit down to forty-five while the destruction's going on. I had talked to him previously. At first I was okay with it and then I got thinking, I was like, you know what, that's awful narrow. So the next day I emailed him, that's, this truck shouldn't be on that. It's narrow and all, you know, is there any way we can turn them around? And they were like, well, that's the only way we got to send people through because seventy-five's going to be closed, twenty-six is closed, four twenty-one is closed. Which is their, their fault as far as figuring out when they're going to do stuff. So we was just going to drop the speed limit down and, and they're supposed to be putting up signs. Trying to think where they said, uh, at twenty-six, we're going to run it around, the truck traffic's supposed to run around four twenty-one, be careful. So it'll go down to twenty-six to sixty-five and up to Hartland, four twenty-one. So that's what they're supposed to do.
So this is temporary for during the.
Yeah, structure.
This leaves, this, this leaves it open for truck traffic.
Well, that, that's what the state is going to put those up so the truck traffic is supposed to go around all the.
We're going to have local truck traffic down there. I mean, there's agricultural semis.
Drive. You will drive, yeah.
So barricades have to be put up to accommodate big agricultural, you know, local.
Since we're going to let the, since the agricultural trucks are going to be on there, sir, I don't think you, I wouldn't advise.
The barriers. That's why the reason to reduce the speed, to make it a little safer.
I drove it today. That's the way I have to come to come up here, right? Yeah. Beautifully paved, but it's not very wide.
Hey, everyone, you just don't be the first one to hear this.
Yeah.
It's fifty-five. And it's fifty-five unless posted.
Now, how is that, Ted? I've been told two different things. County roads that are not posted are fifteen mile an hour, fifty-five, fifty-five.
Is Tony still here?
It's, it's fifty-five.
It's fifty-five.
It's fifty-five unless otherwise posted, but you also have to drive with due regard. But people don't do that here.
I know when Paul was here, he tried to get every, all country roads to be forty-five miles per hour. So then they must have switched to what you just said.
There are sections that you might go through the ordinance. There's different sections throughout the county that, there's some county roads that are forty mile an hour, but majority of them are fifty-five.
I mean, if it's not posted, it's fifty-five, that's the law. I mean, you go through, you have to have an injury study really to, to reduce them. This, you can do this because it's, you know, it's temporary destruction.
We have an awful lot of roads that is not safe to drive fifty-five.
Right.
Maybe that study we're going to issue will identify.
Now, that's going to be targeted to accidents.
And what?
That'll be targeted to fatal accidents.
And that will actually conclude with some of the growth. I'll make a motion to executive order twenty-three oh two. Reduce the speed limit. On six hundred south.
I got a motion of second to, for executive order twenty-two and three dash oh two to reduce the speed limit to forty-five mile an hour on six hundred south. And that is between seventy-five and twenty hour. All in favor, please say aye.
Did Keith give with you, our custodian, about getting a sign posted?
He, he talked to me this morning. He was wanting to get three, like three posts.
Did your guys do that?
Yeah, on, on Friday, yeah. I didn't know about the stencil for the, that we don't do much.
Right. I didn't know if you had one laying around when they did the four park area that we redid.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know, we, we had anything to do with putting paint on there.
He probably got better access to get the one that needs it.
I'll, I'll see if we can borrow one or something.
Appreciate that.
Okay, and the only question I had, I'm, I'm one of those guys that sometimes we talk about stuff and I think about it and have a question. I was, I was, I was in substance, we come up here and we're talking about Hunter's thing. That, that he has, we've got a, we've got a vote on it. I just, I got, I have something.